Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special meeting and workshop. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pascal-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be viewed through GoToWebinar. Through proclamation number twenty-two-eight-point-two, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meeting Act. These virtual meetings will continue through May thirty-first and may be extended. This meeting is being televised live on Pasco TV, channel one ninety-one, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. The meeting is also live via the GoToWebinar link on the agenda. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions for items not on the agenda through GoToWebinar, the City of Pasco's Facebook page, or by emailing the city manager directly. And with that, I wanted to just share with everyone very quickly, we are adhering to the guidelines that are set up before us still with our masks. I've just taken it off for the meeting. This area was sanitized and we're all well over six feet apart, just for the record and to try to do things so that we can prevent this virus to spread. So with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, please. We're not a vote, but a roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milley.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present.
All seven accounted for, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody for attending tonight. And we have today, just for the record, we had a council member that asked to come in. And so we are keeping the amount of people limited. And we'll be sharing with the council kind of the plan. If there's something that you would like to bring to the attention or just step away to come to chambers for a specific reason, then we can make accommodations to allow one of the members in compliantly. So we'll get to that a little bit later. Thank you very much. So with that, would you all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And so next, we will go to item number four, which is new business in the special meeting. Today, we're going to talk about the grand old Fourth of July celebration, a decision on how to proceed. And with that, is Brent on the line?
I'll be speaking to that.
Oh, you are, Mr. Ratkey. So go ahead, Mr. Ratkey.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. Zach Ratkey, ACS Director. Pasco's grand old Fourth of July celebration is a major community-wide event that's been taking place in Pasco and in the region for decades. This event typically has numerous events throughout the day, including the Camp Patriot Fun Run, Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, Grand Old Fourth of July Parade, Camp Patriot Show and Shine Car Show with the Grand Old Fourth Fun Inflatables and Food Vendors, Cardboard Regatta Memorial Park, Tri-Cities Youth Soccer Association Sagebrush Shootout Soccer Tournament, Pre-Fireworks Entertainment, which last year was freestyle motocross performance at Geesa Stadium, Grand Old Fourth of July Fireworks Show, to name a few. And thousands of people attend these events each year. However, as we all know, during the pandemic, we are under gathering restrictions due to the stay-at-home order from Governor Inslee. And according to Governor Inslee's Safe Start Washington Plan, cities and counties must meet certain requirements in order to allow for gatherings depending upon the size of the gatherings. At current projections, it's doubtful that Franklin County will be moved beyond Phase Two for July Fourth, which would make any gatherings, even with social distancing measures, impossible and noncompliant with the governor's emergency orders. We also, one of our big contractual obligations for the Grand Old Fourth of July celebration for Pasco is our fireworks contract. Based upon the negotiated contract provisions, the city may reschedule the fireworks display for another date this calendar year, which runs through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, at no additional cost. However, on the other hand, if the city were to cancel this year's show altogether, it would forfeit their seven thousand dollar deposit. Contractor has indicated that they are flexible to dates beyond the July Fourth holiday, should that be the decision of city council. In light of everything described above and bringing forth to this body for discussion this evening, staff has developed three potential options for council consideration. Just going through them briefly and then we could turn over to discussion would be postpone all of the entire Grand Old Fourth of July celebrations to a date later in this year, two thousand and twenty, calendar year. Option number two would be to cancel the July Fourth, Grand Old Fourth of July events, but hold the fireworks show at a later date in two thousand and twenty, so that we would keep our contract with the fireworks vendor, hold the fireworks show at a later date. Or option number three would be to cancel all events, including the fireworks show at Geesa Stadium that evening. And we pick it up and move on to two thousand and twenty-one planning. So in consideration of the above and bringing over to council for discussion, we'll turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Zabel and I are here. Should council or you, Mr. Mayor, have any questions at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Ratkey. Appreciate it. And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look over the different options and maybe think about this a little bit. I have one quick question, Mr. Ratkey, the deposit. Whether we were to choose to hold on to the date as of today, is the deposit just mean that we need to use them this year? Or do we have to make a decision that it's either going to be on the Fourth or a later date this year?
The deposit means that we have through the end of the calendar year to utilize the fireworks display as planned. So we would not be out any of our current budgeted dollars. It's a twenty-eight thousand dollar show. The seven thousand dollars deposit, we would not lose any deposit money if we choose to reschedule the fireworks display any time between now and December thirty-first.
But if we were to choose to cancel everything, then we'd get our deposit back?
We would not.
Oh, we would not?
No.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So with that, I'm going to open up discussion on this. Maybe council can let me know if they want more clarification on each of the motions and/or we'll just take turns and have a discussion on where you feel we should go as a city with this decision. Yeah, it's a pretty big decision for us to make at this point. There's a lot of emotions that are running, at least within me about this. So I'll go ahead and open up the floor to the first one who wants to speak.
Mayor Martinez, this is Councilwoman Roach. May I go first?
Yes, you may. Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Go ahead.
You know, I looked at all three motions and I appreciate the motions that staff has put in for us. One of the things that I wanted to say is just a background to this conversation is that, is my own personal connection with this holiday. In Pasco, I was born in Anchorage, Alaska, and we moved from Anchorage to Washington State. And it took us a few days to drive in our Jeep Cherokee Wagoneer from Anchorage to Pasco. And believe it or not, the date that we rolled into town was July Fourth, nineteen eighty-eight. And that was the first time, at six years old, I got to hold sparklers and be in the park and celebrate with fireworks. And it was one of the most special memories I have of coming to the Tri-Cities and coming to Pasco and making it my home. So I have a lot of connection to this particular celebration. And in the last couple of years, I participated in the parade with about seventy-five to a hundred people in my brother-in-law's classic car and, you know, a truck. And I don't want to, I don't want to let go of the fact that we should celebrate in some way. And while I think that it would be fiscally beneficial, knowing that we're going to have to dip into rainy day funds after the end of this pandemic, you know, maybe tabling our fireworks to, I mean, I've been thinking about this all week long, to Veterans Day instead, when the fire hazard is lower in November. And that takes off, you know, pressure for fire department to respond because summertime is already, you know, high fire hazard season. But, you know, I've already seen in my neighborhood, one motorcycle parade come by for somebody's birthday and a car parade come by. And I cannot tell you how much joy and glee it brought neighbors. It brought everybody out onto their, into their driveways, their front yards, everybody's properly social distanced. And the kids were ecstatic. And I feel like we really need a morale boost and we really need a sense of togetherness right now that altering our celebrations to fit something that is neighborhood-centric. And I've been in communication, you know, with Chief Gear about this and with Dave Zabel about the idea, you know, just kind of spitballing, something that involves us, city council members, getting in our car or our motorcycle and taking a certain neighborhood and working with Parks and Rec to map out the city and the way where we break it out and do a little, you know, motorcycle car parade. Maybe we can do something that encourages, instead of the fireworks, to save money to do a citywide red, white, and blue light affair. I don't know. I grew up in Pasco, in Desert Plateau, and we did the luminaria. And it's still, it's a Christmas lighting, light festival, and it's beautiful. And everybody from Tri-Cities comes around to drive through that neighborhood to see it. And Mayor Martinez, you know what I'm talking about. But I was thinking along, something along the lines of that where, you know, it doesn't matter what kind of home you own, whether it's apartment or duplex or complex, a flag, lights, something that shows that unity and that celebration of our country and that we are, you know, in this together and we can still enjoy ourselves, enjoy beauty, and be together. And so those are the, that's what I'm putting forth. It doesn't fit into any of the motions that currently are, have been proposed by the city. And I'm hoping that city council members also feel similarly about, you know, keeping the celebration in some sort of way, in some sort of modified way where we can still bring, we can participate and we can do it safely, we can do it at a distance and bring joy to our residents. So I hope that's something you'll all be willing to consider.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. Thank you for your thoughts and for your idea. I would say the only challenge, well, it's not a challenge. I would say, I would, I would have no problem participating in an event like that. But what I'm getting at is that the motion, we have to make a decision on the motion for these Fourth of July events that we have in front of us. And as far as what you just explained, I'd be more than happy to participate in a function like that. I think that's something that would be done on our own. And doesn't really take a vote of the council to do what you just described. So, yes, I'm good with what you're saying.
If it requires modified motion, I'm happy to put that forth. I know that was a lot that I just said, but I'm, you know, this is something I've been giving a lot of thought to and it's, you know, something I've already discussed with Chief Gear. He seemed, he said he was amenable to it. He just said the consideration is that they, it is fire season. So they don't necessarily, depending on what's happening with fires, have as much staff to, who would be able to participate or not participate. So those are considerations, but something that is done in conjunction, not just on our own, something that's done in conjunction with Parks and Rec and city staff included.
Okay. All right. Well, we can discuss it further if anybody else has similar thoughts. Anybody else want to speak to this event?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Alvarado.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Go ahead.
I'll be brief. Very much appreciate the comments by Councilmember Roach. And I had a very similar thought where the options before us obviously all sound like downers, and they are. We are definitely at pretty unprecedented time and one that nobody wants to be in. And so there's definitely a sense of mourning for what we've already lost in birthdays, traditions, graduations, and now an event so dear to us. But I very much also believe that we are a creative people that are able to think outside the box and are able to figure out some ways to celebrate what is dear to us. And so I would very much love to explore the idea of being able to have something creative that can really bring people together and have that morale boost, which is something we really need. So I'd be very much in favor of having some form of modified motion too. Yeah, we can figure out what we need to do as far as the postponement of what we already have planned in the past, but certainly so that we're not just postponing something, but we are adding value to the citizens of our, that celebrate this such a dear event to us.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilman David Milley.
Hello, Mr. Milley. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would also echo what two of the council members have talked about. I mean, as council member, I always think we're supposed to bring hope to our city. And so for me to just cancel everything, it just, I don't know, it's just heartbreaking. I would, if I had my druthers, I would love to see like maybe an automotive car parade maybe go from City Hall all the way down to, say, Road sixty-eight, where you have an area just going down Court where you could spread people out and, you know, do the, and that's a huge distance, but no, you know, marching bands, but at least have people where they could join in their cars, motorcycles, floats, what have you. And then I would love to see actually the fireworks go on July Fourth at the stadium. You don't have to have people there, but it would be something to celebrate that, you know, our nation. That's the whole thing that we are celebrating, our independence as a nation. So to cancel our independence, cancel the whole celebration, just to me is gut-wrenching. And I just know that people really need hope, need something to look forward to. Everything's been canceled from, as you said, as in Councilman Alvarado was talking about, graduations, you know, barbecues, all these things that we've just come to take as Americans. So to cancel the Fourth of July, it's, to me, it's almost like canceling Christmas. I mean, it just, it's also one thing I really look forward to in the summer. So I know we can't do everything. I know we need to stay in guidelines, but it just seems that we should have the fireworks on the Fourth of July at night, maybe not have people at the stadium, but at least have the fireworks. And then again, do some sort of parade with just cars and motorcycles and where people keep their distance, but people could watch us go down Court Street and people could enjoy such a great day. And that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Milley. Mr. Maloney? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Councilwoman Blanche, go ahead.
I have my thoughts on this as well. And just like Councilwoman Roach, I've given it a lot of thought. I, again, as well as Councilmember Alvarado, it's a difficult time definitely that we're in. My personal view is that we continue to support our community by keeping them safe. We, there's a lot of recommendations that the Health District suggests. And there's a lot of suggestions now that the governor has suggested in his most recent clarification for the outdoors due to the fact that we've had high numbers reported here in the last few days. I think that by continuing to do some sort of a modified parade demonstration, drive-through, we continue to drop crowds unwillingly, of course, and again, exposing our community and therefore delaying going into Phase Two. I'm with you all that, yes, we are in a, we do need to celebrate Fourth of July, our independence, by not doing that in the date of July Fourth. I don't believe we are breaking any rules or are crushing any hearts or dreams. Again, this is in support of keeping the community safe and healthy. I go with the staff recommendation of postponing the majority of the events, the parade, and continuing with the fireworks at a different date, as recommended by Chief Gear, where a date that does not compromise the fire season. And we definitely don't want any fires. But again, this is in, this is in hopes that we continue to support those individuals that can't fend for themselves or, you know, exposing them unnecessarily to this virus. And this is in conjunction with, again, what the Benton Franklin Health District has suggested, some of the points that the governor has suggested, and again, due to the high numbers in our community. So I am in support of the staff recommended option number two. Those are my personal thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blanche. Mr. Maloney?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I do have a couple of thoughts on this. And, you know, listening to Councilwoman Roach's comments about how much this event means to her was, really was making me think hard about how much this event has meant to me. I mean, I've been attending the Fourth of July parades and festivities for years and years. I mean, my, my girls, I mean, when my oldest daughter was too little to take, we would, we walked her over to my parents' house, who doesn't live too far from the stadium, and walked all the way over to the stadium to sit in the soccer fields to watch it. And it just, I think of all the memories and it, this is a crushing discussion to have. And it's, I know it's not one that any of us takes lightly. And, you know, for the last two years, I've got, I had the pleasure of being mayor for the day. A former mayor, Watkins, had a tendency to go out on family vacations the last two years. So I got to start the day with going to hang out with the Kiwanis Club and support them at their pancake breakfast, then go talk and joke with all the parade entries before choosing a winner. Got to ride along in the parade with the Mustang Club. And then just one of the coolest things was judging that car show. I mean, what a privilege. I don't know jack about cars, but those are some gorgeous, gorgeous vehicles that people put together. And my family always joined me and cast their own ballots. And so far, in those two years, it was eight different choices for four people. So none of, we couldn't seem to agree on which car we liked best, which is, I think, even more awesome. And then we'd head home to barbecue with friends and family before heading over to the Geesa Stadium to celebrate with the community. I mean, it was a, it's been an absolutely wonderful, packed day the last couple of years. And I just can't, I can't emphasize how much these events mean to me. But I just don't see how we can safely and legally hold really any of it, even the fireworks. I mean, when I think about the fireworks, we've got, the soccer fields are owned by the city, the stadium's owned by the city. I can't possibly see how it wouldn't be fall on us to be responsible for crowd control. And if we do that, then we're putting our first responders at risk for having to try to maintain and enforce social distancing. I can't abide by the thought that we would have to put ours at risk in that way. Just like Mayor Pro Tem Barajas alluded to, I can't, I've struggled to imagine even a parade not ending up creating crowds of people. When we think of how the parade's through downtown and almost entirely through my district, how packed they are, we just can't hit every street and we can't hit every place. I'm interested in hearing more about, about Councilwoman Roach's suggestion of doing something creative. I'm interested. I don't know that I, as you indicated, Mr. Mayor, I also don't see how we necessarily have a role as a city that we'll be able to vote on today as to what exactly the city's position would be in preparing or creating that and what obligations it may put on us to enforce social distancing if we have, let's say, a crowd of council members all in lines of cars and we have people coming out in the neighborhood and lining the streets. I would struggle at what our legal obligation was on that. And we'd need to understand a lot better as to how we can do this right. I don't want to give up these celebrations. They mean so much to me. But I think the right thing is, exactly as Ms. Barajas said, I think the right thing is to see about delaying this. And let's make, let's make events later this year bigger and more important and more impactful than they've ever been before. Thank you.
Mayor Martinez, this is Councilwoman Roach. May I just respond to the one question that Councilmember Maloney had?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Roach.
So I did see this, besides in my neighborhood, the one motorcycle parade, which was properly social distanced. It was, you know, that one was spontaneous. We didn't know what was happening. Our, one of our neighbors had a, you know, family member who had a birthday party and that was planned by them. And so we just could hear, we could hear those hogs coming around the neighborhood. They were loud and they got everybody's attention. And so we all just came out and were in our own front lines. Nobody was shoulder to shoulder or even within six feet of distance from another person. The other example that I've seen done, and I was very appreciative of it, the administration and the staff of Maya Angelou Elementary planned a teacher parade. And so what they did ahead of time was we all who are parents at the school and staff got a map ahead of time of the neighborhood that they would go through and the streets that they would go through. And so they sectioned it out, color coordinated it, you know, it was blue, red, green, and blue went, the blue streets went first, then the second area went next, and then the third area. And we were just outside of that parade route. And so what we did was we, I drove my kids within the neighborhood to Road eighty-four, which is where the school is at, and parked ourselves away from other people and other cars and had no contact with anybody else. And I cannot tell you how much it meant to my kids. My daughter's in kindergarten. Her kindergarten year, her first year of public school education is, you know, it's gone. She, I mean, she cries about it every other day, saying, "I miss my friends. I miss my teacher. Why can't I see them?" And it meant so much to me as a parent that they arranged for that and they did that. It meant so much to my kids. My son said to me, "I haven't seen Señora Lopez in so long. I can't even believe I just saw her." And he was over the moon to see his teacher. So I think there's a way in doing it in an organized manner. And we could, I mean, I'm not suggesting that one group of, maybe we city council members, you know, plan something in our own districts and we stick to that district and we have, you know, ten vehicles or whatever it is that only do that district. And it's not just one massive parade, but small. We advertise where we're going. And it's not just one massive parade, but but small. We advertise where we're going and where people can stand if they're, you know, need a place to be distanced from others. It would take coordination, it would take planning and it would take time and I still think that it's worth doing. And I think it's something that we can pull off because we all know this city, it's it's not the largest city. I think that our residents will really appreciate it. And if our teachers were able to do something like that and coordinate that, we can ask them how they did it and give us some pointers. I think it's worth trying.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could continue that dialogue just a little longer, because I have follow-up questions.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Yep, Mrs. Roach, I appreciate all of that. I really do. I just, I guess what I'm concerned about is unintended consequences. The houses in my district are much more closely together. They're they're not as big of yards. The streets are much more closely packed. So things tend to be more difficult to enforce that sort of, to be able to even have that sort of social distancing. Also, I believe Ms. Barajas and Mr. Alvarado in my districts have considerably more apartments and other high-density residential units. And I would be well, I work in one part of the town for an elementary school, may not work for citywide in all of our different areas. And so I'm supportive of understanding what a solution could be. And so I'm not saying that any of these challenges are insurmountable. However, I feel that this may not be the right thing for the city to coordinate as a having staff redirect their attention and planning to that as opposed to perhaps a private effort that that I'd love to have a further conversation about as a private citizen. That that's kind of where my head's at. So I just wanted to be be clear what, just to, just to wrap that up and we can that's that's my position at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
Sure, and I don't think we need to hash out all the details right here, right now, but, you know, even with single-family residences, there's a minimum of five-foot setback from your property line. That's enough to get six feet between houses. You know, I thought about apartment buildings and just, you know, asking people to stay on their patios versus, you know, coming out onto a street and maybe going through a parking lot. Whatever that is, I'm sure we could get innovative in how we do it and I would be willing to work with Parks and Rec as to how we do it and and putting in my personal time into that.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. Mr. Raca, the only decision, or I guess Mr. Zabel wanted you to, the only decision we really have to make in a particular time fashion is our contract with the fireworks, right? Obviously, everything requires planning and forethought. But we're trying to make a decision on whether to move forward with the contract or not, right?
Well, I think I think it's a number of events because if you're gonna have events, you do need to get them advertised. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
Notice and they, to the extent city staffs are involved, it would take some, there's gonna be some level of coordination depending on what we do.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'm I'm just trying to think through everything that we've heard because I think we're all on the same footing here where no one wants Fourth of July to go away. To me, there are three sacred American holidays and that's Memorial Day, which we've lost yesterday. And kudos to the cemetery staff. It was beautiful. The flags, everything looked right. It felt right. It was just a little quiet and I saw a nice selfie of you, Mayor, so thank you for being out there too. And then we have Fourth of July and then Veterans Day. You know, I I appreciate that uncertain times bring innovative leadership and it, we are all trying to do that. We are trying to protect those who cannot protect themselves. We are trying to retain the sacred days that we hold as sacred. I just, you know, I look at, I listen to what Councilwoman Roach said about the the school parade and, you know, they came down my street and my daughter's teacher was there and she lit up. I don't see why we couldn't find a way to fashion something like that. I recognize there's a question of potential inviting people to break the Governor's order, potentially being closer to six feet, family by family. I gotta believe that we can figure this out. I look at the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast and every day at the school for an hour, lunches are given out. For weekends, they're given out for the full weekend. For a long weekend, they gave out up to four meals per kid, I believe. If the school districts can figure out how to, if we want to move forward with the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, why couldn't we set up a system like that? Where people are adequately spaced and we can still have some interaction. Fourth of July is not only sacred because it represents the birthplace of this country, but it unites us. And we do need to be united at some point. I recognize that if we hold the fireworks, there's gonna be a, that'll be a headache. You're in, you're essentially saying, hey, we're doing this. This is all city property surrounding here, most of it. And we'd have to either figure out how to control it, to shut it down, or risk that more than fifty people would be there at a time. But I think we need, we need to do something. I think we can truncate this in a way that it's safe, that it is beneficial to the community and that it brings us a spirit of hope. And to me, that's that's what this would do. It would, whether it's smaller parades, I don't know. I I I haven't figured it out. I know there are a lot of smarter people in this room and and elsewhere that are working on this. But I I do think that there are ways that we can do some of these events in a way that's safe and that allows us to celebrate, not just in our own siloed worlds, but together. And if that means, you know, people six feet apart, hanging out, waiting for a car to pass, then maybe that's the right solution. But I I can't quite honestly and good conscience vote for any of these three motions. My preference would be to at least hold the fireworks show. Beyond that, I I think Councilwoman Roach is right on, right up the nose for figuring out how we could do smaller versions of the parade or livestream the parade. I I I don't know. There are so many technological opportunities I think we could take advantage of with drones, other things like that. I I don't know. Obviously, what the regulations are with flying drones during certain hours. But I I do think that we could, we could figure this out. And so that's, that's where I sit. My preference would be to have a fourth motion, a motion to allow for the fireworks to proceed as planned and again, I I'm I'm open to figuring out how to, how host the grand old Fourth of July parade and potentially the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast. The remainder I I don't see as feasible, given our current circumstances, but to me, I think that's a a symbol of hope, to have a couple of events sparse throughout the day, to allow our Kiwanis to want to continually serve as they want to and to 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 show people the visual display that celebrates what we are.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. And then I will, I'm gonna give my thoughts here before we go on to to come to a decision on what we want to do as a, as a council. But as I'm hearing everybody speak, there's no question about our patriotism and our love for this community and our love for this country and for what it stands for and and when it was born. But this is my thought, you know, it it with all due respect, and I don't mean this in any demeaning way whatsoever, but I it just real, it it somewhat makes me a little cringe when we can't do something because we feel like we're forcing people to do something because we want to hold an event. By holding an event, I don't feel like we're forcing anybody to do anything. Everybody has the right to take care of themselves and to do what they need to do to stay safe. And what we're doing right now is we're practicing social distancing. We're staying home for the most part. Many of us are not staying home. But we're 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 doing social distancing. We're wearing masks when we when we want to be safe and and protect others. We make our own choices as Americans, as adults. And you know, to not have a function because we're worried about people coming out of their apartments and staying, you know, and getting within six feet from each other. I I just feel like we shouldn't be dig, I don't want to say that word. We shouldn't be trying to control people that much. People should be able to control themselves. And the reality is is that on the Fourth of July, there's gonna be a lot of parties at home. People, families are gonna celebrate at home. If we do nothing else, families are gonna celebrate at home. And there's gonna be the occasional person illegally throwing a firework, which I don't, I wouldn't suggest to anybody. And I hope nobody does it. But the reality is that people are gonna share at home. And that's why I would be in in favor of of Zara Roach's idea of maybe having staff and helping us create this way where each council can take their districts and and do something that keeps people in their homes and their yards and keep it to where only those people within their households are with each other and not having them get close to each other. And I'm, I have to say that we at least have to have the fireworks show. We're not asking anybody to come anywhere, but if we can just, in the best way strategically plan and to me, the the Giza Stadium, not the Giza Stadium inside, but to have the fireworks show at Giza Stadium where a large part of Pasco can see these or any other place that the majority of the population, it doesn't have to be there, where the majority of the population can look out their windows, out their yards and look at the fireworks show. And they can turn on their music to whoever they want, within their household or within their group of people and and have a fireworks show and also have that little bit of life of community and organizing some way to keep a minimal amount of people in a parade, but having people stay in their homes where they're gonna be having a somewhat of a festival anyway. So that would be my, that would be my my suggestion. So with that said, I would like to and maybe Mr. Zabel can help if if needed, but we need to come up with a motion of what we want. And we've heard a lot of different ideas here tonight. But let me just perhaps start, just to start, by saying that we would have a motion that would real quickly be created that would allow the staff to help to help and and from the information that I've gotten from the council, is to have the staff help or start organizing some type of way that the county, each council can take a little root in their in their district area and then proceed with the fireworks show, only not anything else. And then and just advocating that people stay at home, try to look at, see it from their yard, stay within the people within your household, practice social distancing. But I'm just not willing to to feel defeated enough to let this go away for for us as Americans and and us in this community. So that would just be my suggestion. Again, it would be to somehow create a motion to have staff prepare some type of way to most safely kind of do it, the Councilwoman Roach was was discussing, and to proceed with the fireworks show. And that would be my suggestion. So anybody else want to speak up right away for?
Mayor Mark, this is Councilwoman Roach, and I just, I wanted to ask a question of city staff about fireworks and just to get a clear understanding of how we do this as a city. Mr. Zabel, do we put out any sort of public notice before, as far as letting residents know that, you know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be fireworks, there's gonna be noise, or does it just happen every year because it's tradition and ritual to do it? Is it possible for us to modify our fireworks so that it's not happening necessarily at Giza Stadium, but can we kind of do it like a pop-up show where nobody knows where we're gonna be at and we just, you know, go to a certain soccer field or a certain spot and, you know, have different people, you know, doing their, doing the fireworks at those locations, maybe at a very scaled-down rate, just so it's accessible to different people, different Pasco residents, depending on their geography. Is that a is that even something that we can ask for from the company that does it? And your ideas or thoughts on that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I I appreciate that and I'm I'm actually gonna kick that to the fire chief because there's a lot that actually goes into writing the permit for the fireworks displays that we do, even even the one at Giza that we do every year. We've modified that a couple of times just in the last few years. So if Chief Gear is on the line, please, Chief, why don't you weigh in on what considerations you'd have to make for multiple sites?
Well, the the issue, the multiple sites for small, the displays that the community stuff is not an issue at all, as long as it's a safe and sane that's being sold throughout the city, which we've encouraged and tried to get more community gatherings. We recently had a application to approve a fireworks display for a graduation, for a graduate by a private individual. And the city attorney advised me that I was not able to approve that permit based on three conditions. And a couple of the conditions were the timing of the permit, but the third condition was the fact that it violated the Governor's stay-home order. And by encouraging people to gather to observe that permit or, excuse me, to observe that display of fireworks. So I did not approve that fireworks permit. So for me to go any farther, I I would prefer to have Eric Ferguson weigh in on the whole issue of approving a fireworks permit at Giza Stadium, which is going to draw people. Given that it may be the only fireworks display in the community or public fireworks display in the community, it's going to draw people and create an issue for law enforcement to turn those people away. If we're just talking about having a display that is I don't know what the right word, virtual display where no one else is there. We're learning all kinds of new words and terms and things as we go on. I don't know how we're gonna keep people, we have a hard time keeping people from entering illegally within the what we call the fallout zone on a regular year there. So it it's concerning to me. I get, I get the whole thing. I I like fireworks too and and I write permits every year for it and, you know, like fifteen just for the Dust Devils displays themselves. But I'm just not sure how to do this given all the restrictions and the unknowns we're gonna have in in a little over a month with with our numbers here and not knowing what the Governor's gonna tell us we can do. So I, maybe Eric could weigh in on this at this point?
And before he did that, there's, there's a, I think there's a speaking of numbers, there's a couple of them that have been thrown out there that I I think we need to probably zero in on for a minute. One, the gathering, I heard a, I heard a number as high as keeping the crowds below fifty. Right now, we're in Phase One. Which gathering's under Phase One, and I'm looking at the matrix right in front of me. None. Phase Two, which is probably where we'll be by then, based on the matrix the Governor has provided, if our numbers come down. And that's, you know, it's a three-week process. It's fourteen days of meeting a certain standard that we're nowhere near at this point in time from a numbers standpoint. We all read that over the weekend in the Tri-City Herald. Gathering with no more than five people outside your household per week. And so Phase Three would allow crowds of no more than fifty. But keeping in mind that we need to have a couple of weeks of data and some time for the whoever it is at the Governor's office that looks at these things to do so. And for the county council to take action, the health officer and so forth. We we would need to have some pretty good-looking numbers by the middle of June. Uh, we we would need to have some pretty good-looking numbers by the middle of June. To to get to phase three, so I I just wanted to throw that out there, so we're looking most likely July fourth. Of a phase two crowd limitation of five people outside of your home.
Today was the Ben Franklin Health District phone call with the with Dr. Amy Persons, I know Mayor Martinez, you were on that and. From their health district's word is that. Our hotspots like Tyson and uh. Uh, the senior living facilities have all, you know, dwindled, Tyson hasn't had any cases in over two weeks. Uh, senior living facilities are down to single-digit numbers, and so a community spread is happening. Uh, consistently and our numbers are still going up and. And I know that's a really real consideration uh in this. And we also have to balance this decision to with. The fact that we are all, I know we are all committed to getting to phase two and getting to our small business owners to open back up. And so. Yeah, so I just, I know that's a, that's part of this consideration, even though. We are trying to bring joy and hope and celebration. Um, we have to take that into account, it's how we, how the effect ripples out further. Uh, down the line besides just this one, this one day and one night.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roach. You you're what, oh, you're getting Eric on the line?
You guys hear me?
We got you, Eric.
Okay, great, yeah, so I did wanna just uh chat a little bit about some of the things the fire chief uh brought up. Uh, with regard to uh the the kind of the process and the overall picture, uh, kind of as a starting point, I was able to uh um. Kind of hear and apologize, kinda doing it at the last second, but I was able to kinda take a a quick survey of some other city attorneys and some other folks and. Kinda get us some ideas about what some of their approaches are, and it it appears that the pretty much the overwhelming majority of of. Folks that have responded uh are are in jurisdictions where they've uh canceled events uh pretty much uh straight out, there are. Uh, some other folks that are trying to do some fireworks events. In some very uh specific locations where they feel like they can control the crowds, um. Uh, I think uh the the fire chief's uh right uh spot on uh with that analysis of. It's it's not so much the fireworks that uh that are gonna be the problem, it's the ability to control. Um, all the other uh kind of factors that are gonna uh go into this in terms of having people try to attend this. And we've got a very, uh, it it sounds like anyway, and I don't, I don't uh. Profess to be an expert on on the location, but it sounds like this location is uh particularly problematic. Uh, because of the just the sprawling uh experience and the ability to control it, uh, it's not, uh. Uh, it does not appear easy, uh, it will really, uh, as the city manager said, it really, you know, nobody, uh. That is even considering having uh any kind of uh, you know, fireworks. Uh, is in phase one, everybody that is even considering that uh has already, is already in phase two and. And I think uh they're anticipating potentially being in phase three by the time they have their fireworks show, um, so that will be, uh, that will be a factor. Uh, the the other, some of the other uh considerations will be, um, depending on what. Amount of social distancing that will still be required under the governor's order, assuming that uh it gets extended to to that point, and I think that. Yeah, it's probably pretty safe that the, I think it will, um, how you're able to enforce that. Um, with regard to not just people, um, you know, being in in close proximity, the number of those people, but then how you're going to control. Uh, whatever requirements that the governor's order will still maintain uh for those people that, I mean, so for example, even though you're allowed to have uh fifty people. There's still gonna be some social distancing requirements, there's gonna be some masks that are required that. There also is a a a fair amount of folks that are worried about, um, the uh. The, I guess the idea or the suggestion that this would encourage uh folks to get in their car after having consumed a. Um, a fair amount of um uh potentially alcoholic beverages, so uh that's also an additional concern that has popped up. But uh one of the things that is not clear is to what degree that the city would uh create a duty. Um, by uh having an event where uh they would uh be able to. You know, or whether somebody could argue that uh the city should have known that uh by whatever event that they created. Uh, that they were increasing a certain risk, and you know, from a from a legal perspective, that's always something that we worry about, making sure that uh. Uh, where we have it, where we don't currently have a duty, that we don't uh, um. We don't, you know, unfortunately create uh one where one previously didn't exist, so. Uh, that was just some of the concerns that that uh we would have uh about how uh this might proceed. But uh it uh, it is uh one of those things where it doesn't sound like anybody in our particular situation. Uh, is moving forward uh at this time, but it 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 really would come down to um how you would try to uh do that.
Well, you're not much help, Eric.
I apologize, I know, right? I give a black and white answer, but I couldn't find one.
I'm just joking, thank you for that information, um.
This is Councilwoman Roach, may I put forth the idea again of of maybe postponing fireworks to. Another patriotic holiday, which is Veterans Day, um, which is enough. Farther, far down enough the line that hopefully we've moved to that phase. Uh, that we need to move to to. To be able to have a celebration where we might be able to get. A a fireworks permit from Chief Gear and. Proceed to celebrate people who deserve to be celebrated as well and celebrate together. Uh, with things that go boom because we all like that, um, and things that sparkle. And. You know, continue on, I propose we continue on with the grand old fourth celebration that is modified. At at this time, uh, not. You know, exactly how we've done it in the past, but you know, we don't have to define it at this moment, um. Maybe we can get more staff input on what they feel is uh what we're capable of doing in a safe way.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman Roach, it sounds to me like you are re- you recommending the option two then is. Um, to cancel the. To cancel the two thousand twenty Pascal's Grand Old Fourth of July Celebration Events. Uh, or I'm sorry, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be number two, no, it would be and move, it would be number one, wouldn't it? And selecting a new date. Uh, making all other needed preparations, so it sounds like. You're in favor of uh motion number one, uh, Councilwoman Roach, correct?
Well, motion number one in regards to the fireworks, but not to the. Not to the celebration aspect, you know, that we come up with a modified celebration that. You know, is a car parade, you know, neighborhood car parades or motorcycle parade or whatever, but at this moment, just. You know, i- it's not exactly the motion that set any of the three motions that set before us. Um, it would just be to postpone fireworks to another patriotic holiday and to. You know, to keep our community safe, uh, as we're hearing from. Uh, our fire chiefs' perspective and the attorney and from people contracting the virus. Uh, those are all worthy considerations, but um. You know, to have something that we still do and it be a completely new. Uh, tradition that we haven't done before, and I don't know what that is. I've just put an idea forth, I'm not, I I don't, we don't have to do that. Maybe we come back with some staff recommendations as to what they think we can pull off.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Ms. Alvarado.
If we were to get a, if I was to get a condensed version of that motion, I would second it.
Okay, Mr. Serrano, did you have another word?
Yeah, I do have a question for Mr. Ferguson, you still on the line, Eric?
Yes, sir.
Um, the city's liability policy, what does that look like if we got sued on that type of. Negligence claim or, you know, invitation? Um, have you had a chance to look at that, or is that too far out there?
No, it uh, we did try to take a a quick look at that, I mean, obviously the starting point is that we have a. Uh, the the public duty doctrine and and wh- what that essentially means is that as long as we're doing something uh uh for the public, uh, we uh. Um, we should be fine in being able to uh make sure that we don't have a particularized relationship uh that would expose us to some kind of liability, personal liability. Uh, the the more or the further down, uh, the further uh connected or narrow that we get with. Uh, particularized events, then that uh that starts to narrow. Uh, our uh exemption there, and so uh we have to be careful as we start to get uh a more particularized event. Uh, that could uh be uh could be creating duties that might not have previously been there, but. Uh, it it doesn't, it doesn't sound like um the idea of a fireworks show. Uh, in and of itself, and I and I do mean it uh that way. Uh, is the problem, it sounds like it's going to be the conditions that uh that that would move forward under, that could potentially. Um, uh, create some liability that uh we would obviously wanna risk assess for uh before proceeding, but uh but it sounds like it it's really in the uh. It's uh in the process of uh of how that would go about, whether uh uh we'd be creating a a duty where we might not have previously had one.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I mean, I'm still open to finding a solution to having fireworks and some activities on the Fourth of July, um, I don't. I don't know if you actually made an official motion or if you wanna withdraw it, but uh.
No, there's no official motion on the floor.
Okay, well, I mean, just the the concept you kicked around of still can maintaining the fireworks show on the Fourth of July. And finding a truncated version of activities, uh, whether it's as Councilwoman Roach has put forward. Geographically isolated um parades, but I I I do think. I do think that there needs to be a celebration, um, and. I think fireworks is how we celebrate the Fourth of July, now there might be another option, I don't know. I don't, I don't know that we can't get the bat signal out there and do something, right, um? I don't know what that would cost uh to get that type of lighting out there, um, to light up City Hall, I I don't know. Um, based on. The thoughts that I've given this, I I still think we could move forward with the Fourth of July fireworks show, I do think. Um, and I don't know, maybe Chief Gear, that's the only place we could have it, but I don't know if we can do it from the river. Um, I don't know how much more that would cost. I don't know if the vendor could even do it from the river if we had to have a specialized vendor, so I I don't know the conditions. But I I don't believe this is something worth giving up on because I think. There are enough smart people in the room that could figure out a way to do this, I mean. What was it, two years ago, we adopted a fireworks ordinance to allow people to utilize personal consumption because we believe our residents. Will use them safely and sanely, if we can't exemplify that as a city. Then we're kind of falling flat on our swords, right, so I I I still believe there is a way to safely. Without inviting everyone to congregate at one location. You're right, Mayor, people are gonna have parties, there're gonna be five people, there're gonna be fifty people, depending on what their sprawl's like. It's gonna happen, we're not, we're not gonna stop all that, but if we can find a place to do fireworks, that um. Maybe, and even if we did them at the Giza Stadium unannounced, I I don't know. The I, I think there is a way to still have a celebration on the Fourth of July. And quite frankly, I'm not opposed to having an additional fireworks show on um Veterans Day. To celebrate those people and hopefully freedom from COVID, or more freedom from COVID, um. But I s- I still maintain that we can figure out a way to do at least the fireworks show. Safely without inviting a bunch of risk.
Okay, well, we need to move forward, uh, council, and the only way that I can see this happening. Is um. By somebody putting a motion forward, um, I guess I would like to hear from if if not to put anyone on the spot, but I've already heard. Well, I I've heard Pete Serrano, and you can make a motion if you'd like. Uh, and I've also heard uh Zara's modified, uh, if you would, a modified amendment motion saying. Um, move the uh fireworks show to a later date and. Have some type of a staff put together, an organized event. Such as the one that Councilwoman Roach was talking about, and I guess I would like to hear from. Uh, Mayor Protem Blanch and and or Mr. Maloney on. It sounds like you guys were like right in between where Zara and and uh. And Alvarado is and we're kind of uh beating ice it, so what, your thoughts, any thoughts?
Yes, this is, this is Mayor Protem Barahas. Um, and just wanna add, I I do not oppose at all uh continuing with celebrations. However, uh, from what I've picked up from uh Councilwoman Roach, um. Can moving the fireworks to another celebrated uh celebration, um, it sounds like. A portion of option number two, uh, continue uh with the Fourth of July Celebration fireworks. At a postponed date, um, that's, that's what it sounds like to me, um. Includes the cancellation of the other events. Um, and Chief Gear, you mentioned something about a potential, um. Virtual celebration, maybe virtual fireworks show, um, maybe uh something like lighting up. The 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 city hall, uh, the cable bridge, the blue bridge, uh, the parks or something, uh. That commemorates Fourth of July, but again, my my stance is with option number two. Um, moving our Fourth of July fireworks celebration to a different date, and if that's the. The Veterans Day, uh, so be it, um, again, there's no other group of people that should be, uh. Celebrated more than our veterans and everyone that has served, um. But again, I'm not opposed to to continuing our celebration of Fourth of July. Uh, but we just need to figure out and agree on a different option. But so far, what I've heard is option number two in a modified manner.
M- Mr. Maloney? Any suggestions, one one uh last thought, maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize, I'm having some connectivity issues back and forth, so my my apologies to you if I'm cutting out a little bit. Um, my my thoughts are that, um, I I don't see how we can, we can legally uh perform the fireworks celebration. People will congregate, they will congregate on city property, and I don't see how this would not violate the governor's order and put us in in. Beyond just legal peril of um of having individuals um that at risk, um, but us being sued by the AG. Um, and potentially having state.
Okay, well, what I'm hearing. Is, uh, and maybe, um. I don't know, Mr. uh, Mr. Zabel, if you could help a little bit, but what I'm hearing is.
Funds withheld and other things, I don't think Inslee's going uh would take very lightly to this, now I don't necessarily agree with his. Are we losing me?
No, go go ahead, Mr. Maloney.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
My apologies, again, I'm 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 struggling a little bit with my connectivity, so I I apologize again. Thank you, so eh I support a modified option number two, just to wrap that up.
Okay, so I'm hearing the majority of the council, um. Is in favor of of modified or amended motion number two. To uh cancel the two thousand twenty Pascal's cancel our grand old Fourth of July Celebration event. Um, eh, except for the fireworks show to be postponed at a later date. Um. At a later date this calendar year when social distancing measures have been relaxed and authorized staff to begin process of selecting a new date. And making all needed preparations and in addition to prepare. I'm, um. Somewhat of a modified, uh, uh, of of a, some type of a of an event. Or at least get staff support to create an event.
Would you like me to to put forth that motion?
Yes, I would like for somebody to put up a motion.
May I move to?
Uh, Mrs. Roach, Councilwoman Roach?
Yes.
Yes.
We, we have one more comment, Dave, did you, I, I'm sorry, I.
Oh, sure.
I just wanted to give Dave Maloney an opportunity to, to, to speak in again. I'm sorry for, for skipping you, David.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I am with your motion, I, I do think that the city can come up with something where we could have five or six small parades and a fireworks show and have it where people stay in their cars that are just gonna watch the show, don't have people get out of their cars. I mean, there, there should be something that we could come up with to have a fireworks display on the Fourth of July. So I am with, with the mayor and with Councilmember Serrano, so I mean, that is three. What we haven't heard from is Councilmember Alvarado as far as really where he stands. I mean, I know where Roach and Brahas and Maloney stand, I'm saying we, we don't have the majority until we hear from Alvarado as far as what he wants. That's my opinion because I am with the mayor and Serrano.
Yeah, my statement was, I would second Councilmember Roach's motion if, if, if it was me.
That's four. That's a four, so with that, can you come up with a motion, Councilwoman Roach?
Yes, the motion, I move to postpone the fireworks show to a later date this calendar year when social distancing measures have been relaxed and authorized staff to begin the process of selecting a new date and making all needed preparations for possibly Veterans Day. And I move that we allow city staff to modify our grand old Fourth of July celebrations in a manner that adheres to our stay healthy and stay safe orders.
I'll second, this is Councilmember Alvarado.
Okay, there's been a motion, and I think, do I, do I need to read that motion again? Okay, so there's been a motion that's been seconded by Mr. Alvarado. So we're gonna take a roll call vote, we're gonna take a roll call vote on this, just because I think it's gonna be close, and so go ahead.
All right, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Milney.
No.
Roach.
Yes.
Serrano.
No.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
That'd be a no.
There are three no's and four yeses, majority rules.
Majority rules. So with that, it took an hour and thirteen minutes to make this decision, but we will, and I'm, I'm not gonna say it word for word, but it'll be the amended motion number two to postpone the fireworks show to a later date and to basically ask staff to, to move forward with some celebrations that meet all our social distancing and requirements to maintain the order from the governor. Will, okay, all right, well, thank you very much, Council, I know it's tough, and these kind of decisions, although it seems to some people maybe not a big deal, but it, it, it really is, and I appreciate each and every one of your sensitive approaches to this and your care. And I just also appreciate your conduct in, in going by the Robert's Rules of Order and what this country was based on, and that's a democracy, so thank you very much for that. So with that, Mr. Zabel, are you, are you good? Are you still breathing over there?
We feel we have good direction.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Zabel. So with that, I am going to adjourn the special meeting, and we're gonna open up the regular workshop meeting for tonight. And we'll move, we've already went through all the, the introductions and, and information in the beginning of the special meeting, so we're just gonna move right along to, well, with number four, verbal reports from council members. Any council member want to report anything that they want to share? If not, we'll move to item number five, item for discussion. Well, excuse me, I want to retract, I, I do have something I'd like to report, and I'll do it now so that not so many things come up in miscellaneous. But I did attend a meeting from the CDC Center of Disease Control today as Councilwoman Roach also attended, and I don't know if anybody else did or not, but I know Dave, Dave came in. Very interesting news, and Councilwoman Roach touched on it that the hotspots that, that were created with Tyson and some of our senior citizen homes are no longer the issue. We are randomly getting people testing positive just on a random basis, and the Center for Disease Control is having a, a hard time trying to pinpoint exactly where it's coming from and how it's getting here. They tried to trace it back to Mother's Day, but are not very successful with that. So they're still working on it, they're still working, we, we do have room in our hospitals, but there is other issues that we still need to work on as a, as a county, and that is some testing and, and the results coming back quicker. And, and again, getting set up with contact tracing, contact tracing for when the virus hits in citizens. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was that, oh, I just lost my second chance thought, let's see if I put it here. Oh, yes, so the other thing that I wanted to, to make sure and communicate that the CDC is saying is, you know, many people think that when they wear masks, it's, it's to protect themselves, but the reality is, is it, it does somewhat protect you, but it's more protecting from if you were to have the virus and not know it, to giving it to others. So I've been out in the community, and I've, I've seen some citizens, and I, you know, and I respect everybody's opinion, and some people are just refusing not to wear a mask for whatever reason. But the reality is, is it isn't just for you, it's for you to be safe and keep others safe as well. So I just wanted to encourage that. I do not like wearing the mask myself, but I will to protect others because it's the right thing to do. So I wanted to encourage everybody and just kind of inform you that, again, it does help you somewhat, but it, it more protects others in the event that, that the virus might be present. And yes, and, and maintain that, that it really is the only and the, the most important thing that the CDC was putting out is continue to wash your hands, keep your distance, and, and just be conscious of, of, of what you're touching, you know, touching your face. I've probably touched my face many times tonight, I'm as guilty as anybody else. But just to continue to educate our community and keep them safe. At the same time, I would like to say, you know, let's not let this consume our lives like, like it seems like it has been. But nevertheless, we have to maintain the safe, the safe practices to keep this virus from spreading until we can get further control on it and, and hopefully we can get through this real soon. So I just wanted to share that. If there's nobody else, we'll move right along to an interview for Historic Preservation Commission agenda. And tonight, we have.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I had a follow-up question from the CDC.
Okay.
Under, under report on that. So do they have any, did they have any guidance? Did they talk at all about gatherings or other community type events? Or was it just talking about masks and social distancing?
They did not talk, they did not talk about gatherings or anything like that.
May I put forth one of the things that I heard that they need the community to do, Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Roach, Mr. Maloney, they were, BFHD had said that, you know, our contact tracing is only as good as the people who are providing the information. So, you know, there are folks in our community who think of contact tracing as oppressive and don't, and think it's a breach of their privacy. And so the quality, if, if they even decide to participate, some are, you know, not participating in contact tracing, and so that would obviously affect who those contact tracers are able to contact and warn and say, hey, you've been in contact with somebody who has tested positive for COVID-19, please be aware and look out for symptoms. So they're finding that that is a concern and an issue, and it's also the quality of information provided. So, you know, it's good to be, if you are positive and you, you know, are contacted by one of the health district contact tracers to be forthcoming with, you know, all the fam, family or friends or neighbors or colleagues you've been in touch with so that they can be duly notified that they were in contact with you and, and you've tested positive. The other thing that I had heard on there was, gosh, I have, I, I took notes, and so I'm, I'm going through my notes just a minute. They've been, they've added to their website about, about food establishments and childcare and preschools and how they are advising, how they're advising those establishments to reopen. They've added like metrics to their website and different metrics to their website of presumptive cases. There was a lot of good information, it seemed like the most positive call that we've been on up until today. And, and Matt Binkie was on there, and he had some, you know, kind of like a promising, a little glimmer of hope that maybe, you know, our, our two counties might have our, our threshold number of, of positive cases adjusted based on our population size. And so I thought that was a, a positive that, you know, aiming for right now, we have a total, we have to maintain under twenty-nine cases for the next, for two weeks to be able to move to the next phase. And so until we can do that, you know, we won't move to the next phase. And so Matt Binkie said he'd get back to us with information in the next week about whether we, we apply as Benton and Franklin Counties to, to have a different threshold of that number. So that was good information, but it sounded like, you know, PPE is available to dentists now from emergency management because they're reopening. So, yeah, as I said, really positive compared to what the, the previous several weeks of meetings have been.
All right, well, thank.
Hope that answered your question.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Roach, any other questions, Mr. Maloney?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're talking a lot about, Mr. Mayor, I think you put it very well as to what masks are for and what the CDC guidelines and the Health District and this other information we're getting. And I want to make sure that when we're making our decisions that we're having that complete set of information in front of us. Because as a, for instance, you know, obviously, we know that the governor's order says, forbids, you know, gatherings, even I think of, of even small gatherings at this point in time. And so when I'm, when I'm considering some of these things, it'd be good to make sure that we are, we're fully considering all this, this set of information that we're, we're complying with in certain areas, and make sure that we're applying that and thinking about that when we're making decisions in other areas as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we now will move on to item number five, where we'll be interviewing Debbie Tate. Are you, and I apologize, Debbie Tate on the line?
I am.
Well, thank you so much for holding on, Mrs. Tate, we apologize, but this is a city council meeting, and it's so exciting. But with that, we'd like to thank you for you attending this meeting and be willing to serve on this, on this committee, on this commission. Really appreciate everything you do, have a couple of questions for you. We will each ask a question, and first question is, are you still available to attend the, the meetings needed to continue with this commission?
I sure am.
Okay, wonderful, and is there any, do you have any conflicts of interest that you may think of that would prohibit you from, from serving on this commission?
I don't think so.
Okay, well, you've been on it for a while, so I hope not. So, so thank you again, and so the first question, each one of us will ask you a question, and I'll start with, just why are you still interested in continuing to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission?
It's too hard to get rid of me, I'm, I'm a fixture now.
Okay, all right, with that, Mr. Serrano, would you like to ask the next question?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Tate, appreciate your service to the community. How do you view the relationship between historic preservation and economic development?
Unfortunately, in our area, there's a lot of disparity between economic development and historic preservation, but only because of the socioeconomic basis that we're looking at. So we, we don't have a lot to go off of as far as what properties have been historically preserved, much less preserved. And so we've been digging in our committee to at least try to find, we, we don't have a historic district, but we have a lot of historic properties. And so we're really working hard to try to come up with some incentives for preservation of such, but we have no budget, and we've gotten a little bit of help from the city. Unfortunately, the time that we meet has been restricted by the city's budget. I think they cut Jeff Adams' hours, so we could only meet from four to five. And that, we don't get a lot done during that period of time. But we work at it, we're, we're trying to at least interject our two cents worth, and I think we have in the preservation of some of the, the city's overpass that they're putting in so that we can get our hands on some of the artifacts. The Historic Museum has been extremely helpful in that regard, but they too are on restricted budgets, so we work with what we have, which is not very much.
Well, thank you for working with what you have and digging where you dig. I saw a look on Mr. Director Rat Guy's face on the note, so hopefully that will help continue the efforts between you and the city.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maloney, would you like to go next?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for, for, like, like Mr. Serrano said, thank you for willing, being willing to continue your service here, this is important stuff. So I, this is an interesting one to me because if you look in our, our comprehensive plan even, we have specific language in there that, that kind of sets our strategic direction as a city for how we deal with historic buildings and historic preservation. But there certainly are a lot of teeth in there. Do you have some specific recommendations to follow up on your previous answer as to what you'd like to see done, other than money obviously is in short supply, and right now our budget projections are not going to be pleasant? So this may not be the time to be asking for money, but overall, is there something we can do structurally to be able to, to improve this program?
Well, like you said, money would definitely help. We've, we've come up with language, and I think it's already been in front of the council, to at least give a little direction to those people who want to have their properties involved in some sort of historic preservation, but without any kind of incentive like Kennewick has, where they've got grant money and everything available to people to help with the preservation, you're not gonna get a whole lot of participation. So we're trying to select properties that are already well down the road, kind of like the Moore Mansion, where the homeowner has really been doing most of the work, and we're just there to aid them through the process. That's the best we can hope for right now, we're trying to get a, a virtual website. John Funfire's been helping us with the publishing of it. publishing of it. It's, it's been a, a slow process, then interrupted by the overpass project, try to get our hands on some of the artifacts. But it would definitely be helpful if we could have more economic help with the preservation of some of the properties that come up that we know we recognize as historic properties, but there's not much we can do, which, we can't force our hand on properties that want to, say, like on A Street and Fifth. We had a piece of property that was a railroad house and two of the members came within the eleventh hour of uh actually acquiring that property before it was demolished, tried to work with the city. The next day it was demolished, so that fell through. So any kind of budgetary help would be advantageous, especially to put this virtual tour or website on the city of Pasco's web that people could take virtual tours of some of these more interesting properties. And a lot of them are gone, but we have pictures. We've put together five general areas that we're working with and, and I, I think it'll be interesting. We just need to borrow John more.
Well, thank you for your very verbose answer on that. I, I tell you, you have a, you have a real passion for this and, and um a lot of knowledge as well. Um, Mr. Zabel, um, this is a follow-up to that. Is there any chance that I could get offline um a, a little history on uh historical preservation? I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So thank you, Mr. Maloney. Uh, next we'll go to uh Councilwoman Protem Brahas.
Thank you, Mayor. And uh, I also want to thank you for your uh extensive knowledge. Sounds like you have a lot, a lot of knowledge uh throughout the time that you've been serving in the commission. Uh, my question to you, uh, based on your experience, how can community support for preservation programs be increased?
Well, right now, the most realistic way is through the Franklin County Historic Museum, we are, I say we, one of my fellow Pasco High alum, in fact, we're having our fiftieth reunion this year, um, is spearheading a fundraising effort. Now, this is just through the alumnus, but it does go out in the community newspaper that the museum puts out. So fundraising right now is for the, I have to admit, I'm the architect on the annex for the museum, but it's stuff like that, that when you can bring it to the forefront and just start asking for contributions, it, they really come through. It's, it's not a bad idea. But again, Bruce LePage is standing upon himself, it's his time, but the museum is backing him with the newsletters. Well, that costs money. And so when we want to do something, to publish something through the a flyer or the city's newsletter or website, it would be helpful if we had at least a modicum of a budget to advertise stuff like this. And I know that we can reach out to the people that really care. I don't think they've all died off.
Well, thank you for, uh, have you created any sort of uh uh fundraisers maybe to raise money directly from uh the residents?
No, we, we discussed it, but then it always comes back to, well, we don't have any money. We don't have a budget to work with.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that. Sounds like we definitely need to work on something to, to help you out.
That would be wonderful.
Thank, th- thank you, Protem Brahas. Uh, Mr. Milne, you want to go next?
Yes, Mayor, I appreciate that. So, let me pull up that. Okay, so, Mrs. Tate, I again appreciate your service. Um, and I know you've kind of touched on this question already um, in a way, but uh are there any like improvements, buildings, structures, objects in places in Pasco that you feel are especially suitable candidates for historic preservation designation?
Well, we've got a list, but we've only entered them into the more like places of interest since there's not much we can do about again, going back to budget. Uh, the, the, the overpass is right now the key to what, what our efforts are going towards now because we really want to get into the schedule before they demo everything to get, and we've specified bits and pieces of that overpass, the, the old overpass, for chunks of it, we just don't know where it's going afterwards. So, yeah, we could get a little direction in that regard.
Okay, I know, uh, on a personal note, I would love to see more, find out more about the tunnels that were in downtown Pasco, but uh I guess we'll have to save that for another day, but uh thank you for all your hard work.
You bet, David. We researched the tunnels. They're kind of a dead end, but we've had the, the people that related to the, the Chinese guy that did the mural. And they remembered the basement of the motel, but they don't remember much more than that. So we're still researching that one. I believe that would really be a good one.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. And next we'll go over to uh Councilman Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, um, uh, loo- looking at the list of questions, uh, I think I'd like to modify uh my own. Uh, but thank you so much for your service. Uh, my question to you is, um, not, well, you've already spoken to uh funding as perhaps uh be, being something that we needed as a, as a way of support, but do you see any, have the policies? I guess I'll start that over again. Have the policies uh that the city of Pasco has uh put forth over the years have been conducive or have hindered historic preservation?
They haven't hindered it, they just haven't helped. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if you could elaborate a little bit, that'd be great.
Well, one example, as an architect, I worked with the gentleman who had the insurance company in the old Liberty Theater building. And he really wanted to restore that building on the interior and some of the exterior. Not to demolish the things that were still standing, but to enhance them and to bring back an interior that was similar to the theater theme. There was no grant money for the gentleman. There was no help from our committee. There was no help from the city's downtown development at the time, except maybe to paint a sign. And, and it's really a shame when you have people who want to do something with their property, but there's no direction. There's, there we have no policy as far as where to point them except to spend their money and do it. And then we'll just give our blessing to it. It, it's a little frustrating.
Thank you for your candid um answer. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And next we go to Councilwoman Roach.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mrs. Tate. Uh, thank you for your service on Historic Preservation Committee um, uh, commission. I just wanted to start by saying this is a place that I have frequented since I was, since nineteen ninety-eight, since I was in uh, Mr. Dong, you may know him, Mr. Dong's APUS History Class from Pasco High School. Um, he introduced-
No, he was the tennis instructor when I went there.
He was my tennis instructor as well. And um he gave, uh, if you, if you hit your opponent with a tennis ball, he'd give you a soda. And I did that. I, um, I really enjoyed him. But he gave us um assignments to go there and it's how I learned about um our museum. And I, I love it. And I, and once I became a teacher, um, also directed my own students to go there for extra credit and learn about the, the history of their community and, and how it came to be, especially um the history of the railroad and the river and barges. Um, and so I wanted to ask you uh, a little bit different question. And that is, out of all the archives and exhibits that you all have, what is the one that you know, notice gets the most um appreciation or interest from the community?
The Moore Mansion.
The Moore Mansion?
Right. And in our virtual tour that we've got, we had, like I said, there was several topics that we researched that everybody held dear to their heart. So the schools were one, uh railroads were the other. The old Amesworth was another. Uh, I had the Moore Mansion. And if it ever goes online, it should be really interesting because we've got a lot of really interesting stories and, and pictures and interviews by the railroad people that have since passed. Uh, we just have to convince them because they were two-hour-long interviews that we had to convince down to like fifteen minutes, so.
They appreciated hearing those stories from Mr. Dong because his family were, were Chinese uh descent. And that is how they ended up in Pasco, Washington. And so those historical relics are really important to this community of knowing how we came to be and how we came to be such a thriving um area is because of that.
Right. The last one I forgot about, I'm sorry. It was the Naval Air Station, so that's another very interesting point.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Well, Mrs. Tate, thank you very much for answering those questions. Uh, we again appreciate your service and your time that you uh you, you give to this commission and to the city of Pasco, so um, I appreciate it. I will uh be appointing you to this commission and we'll ratify it with the council's approval on, in the next meeting. So thank you very much.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
And thank you for holding on and, and staying with us as long. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, so next we'll move right along to the utility revenue bond sale update. Uh, is Rija on the line?
Yes, evening, Mr. uh Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect. Um, as um council members, um, you uh approved a water sewer utility bond not to exceed uh twenty-five point five million dollars and for the interest rate to not exceed over six point two five percent uh back in April sixth. And uh the market was very volatile at the time. Uh, and we were not quite sure when the right conditions for us to sell this bond was going to be. And um, of course, as we mentioned at the time, we will always wait for the best period to issue the bonds. And in fact, uh, due to the volatility of the market, we delayed the bond issue uh by two weeks to wait for better market conditions. Um, and of course, uh, due to COVID nineteen and all of the impacts to the global economy, but also uh the impact to uh the municipal governments, uh, there was a lot of due diligence from uh the bond council, the underwriters and the rating agency. Usually this process is uh always a pretty in-depth process uh where they're assuring our risk um as a borrower. Uh, but I can say this is my third or fourth bond issuance and this was definitely a different level of scrutiny. I'm happy to report that uh during these very uncertain times, uh where many other municipalities um are in fact being reviewed and in many cases downgraded, we were able to keep our uh rating which is AA minus stable. And the rating agency, SFP Global, uh issued a, a rating report which is attached to your agenda report. If you've not had a chance to read it, I highly recommend that you do. Uh, it really speaks to the decisions that the council has made um in terms of the management of this fund. Um, that shows why we've had, we've been able to keep our rating, first of all. But also, uh, we had a very successful bond issuance. And uh we were able to get an interest rate of three point two-six percent for the new bonds and one point four-five percent for the refunded bonds, which uh is definitely a result that uh is way better than I was anticipating even before COVID nineteen. And it speaks to the confidence in councils, the council's ability to manage this fund uh in future. Uh, but also its strong financial health due to the past practices and decisions. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to report some good news um in this especially grim couple of months. Um, it definitely allows for us to manage this fund in a way that is very cost-effective. Um, and if council remembers the, most of the proceeds of the new bond will go to uh projects uh for process water reuse facility improvement. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Sigdel. Um, glad to hear that uh things worked in our favor um with this bond. Anybody have any comment? Oh, Mr. Zabel?
I, I did just want to follow up on uh Director Sigdel's comments. So if you read the, the uh Rating Bureau report, uh, it speaks to strong income indicators, affordable utility rates, which you'll hear about the balance of that a little bit in a minute, uh, strong financial prog- profile and a very strong liquidity. Uh, we're probably, I want to say they calculated four hundred and thirteen, four hundred and twelve days of liquidity uh for the utility. So that just speaks to the conservative effort in which uh council and and staff have managed the fund. There's a, there's a caution and then there's probably some encouragement. I give, think that gives us a little bit of insight into going forward, how we can improve our rating. And so the caution is that they recognize there's a lot of capital improvements programmed for the utility. And they recognize that that is going to take resources to make those CIP, capital improvement projects uh occur. So uh, put, to use their words, failure on the city's part to raise rates where needed to maintain strong performance could result in a lower rating, which makes a lot of sense. Uh, conversely, uh, the rating could be increased if the city maintains its strong financial position that it that it has right now and is able to implement uh the CIP. So it's, it's kind of a balance of we are going to have to have rate increases down the road. Uh, we need to make sure though that our rates stay affordable. Because those are two points that they really make in that uh analysis uh of our, of the strength of our utility. And uh they also, I think, valued that uh the city was continuing to invest not only in the growth of its system with uh new water rights and, and uh uh sources of supply, treatment, uh capacity, those type of things, but as well as renewal on some of the areas of the system uh that, that uh need that because they're maybe forty, fifty, seventy years old and, and in need of replacement in some areas, so. Uh, overall, I think a really good report. But uh, I, I, again, I, as uh Director Sigdel mentioned, I, I would encourage council to read it because it does provide some good insights of what the Rating Bureau values. And we're on the right track. So congratulations, Council.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Anybody have any other comments?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Councilman Alvarado.
Uh, just a comment. Just uh wanted to congratulate uh council members and the, and the city. Uh, I think this is uh uh really great uh to see among, amongst, you know, what seems to be a pretty grim situation for, for a lot of us uh to know that there is a future and to know that, um, you know, that the, the choices that we make today uh affect tomorrow. And so I, I want to congratulate everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarado. All right.
Mr. Mayor, this is uh Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
I'd, I'd second what Mr. Alvarado said there. And, and I don't know if I can emphasize enough that um, you know, we're talking about one point three million dollars of savings by restructuring that debt. That is, that is huge. And especially when we start looking at um the potential impacts that our current pandemic is having on our, our revenue and our expenses and how it's affecting the community. Um, it, it's absolutely wonderful that staff is able to find such a good and creative way to, to save the taxpayers um, uh, and the ratepayers money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Anybody else? All right, with that, uh, we'll put that on next week's uh, uh, there'll be, no? Oh, just a report, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, next- Next, we're going to go to a professional services agreement. Mr. Worley, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we are going to share with you some information related to a construction management contract for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. And tonight's presentation is going to be given to you by Maria Sarah, our capital improvement program manager. And so with that, I will turn it over to her and be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. Good evening. Thank you for holding on with us tonight. We're going to ask you to turn it on there.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here to talk about the overpass, the Lewis Street Overpass Project. And we are presenting to you a professional services agreement for construction management of this project. But we want to take the opportunity to give you a very brief update on where we are in this project and then go over what this professional services agreement will entail. Okay. First off, you're seeing screen some images. On the left side, you see the current condition of the underpass. And the pedestrian in the very bottom is the image of the tunnel where the pedestrians are to walk through, where this structure is not ADA compliant. And it does not meet current, of course, ADA guidelines or allows for bicycles. On the right side, you are seeing some rendering of the proposed structure. We're seeing the bridge and then the adjacent green areas and some rerouting of existing roadways with under smaller underpasses. Okay, so we are getting really close to bidding this project, hence bringing a professional services agreement to be able to manage the construction. But prior to be able to bid this project, there are a few items pending. Slightly outside of our control, the timing for these ones. The first one is the execution of the agreement for working in the railroad right away. And we are working, there's versions of this agreement that are being worked through the legal department on our end and also BNSF and ongoing coordination happening. The next item is the right away certification, which is required as part of our funding requirements, where the right away acquisition processes are reviewed and approved by Department of Transportation. And of course, that cannot happen until we have an agreement with the railroad. So these are consecutive items. After that, once we have the right away certification, we would be ready to obligate our construction funding, which we will see a more detailed slide on. And again, we require the right away to be completely certified by the time that we are submitting this documentation. Documentation has been prepared and we're ready to send it, but we need to wait until the certification is complete. And once we have the right away funding obligated, we would be ready to advertise the project.
I have a quick question. This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado.
Just a quick question about the right away acquisition. Has there been any progress or have they responded to us at all?
Can you repeat that, Councilmember?
Yeah, has BNSF responded to our requests? Or I know that they're slow in working, but we want to make sure that they're at least knowing that we're just what's going on.
Yes, they have. We've traded examples of the agreement back and forth. We've made changes here and there. They have requested additional information on structural drawings related to work going over the railroad. And those drawings are being reviewed by their structural people. That review needs to be completed for their legal and final review. And so we will continue the coordination with the agreement brought before council.
Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so continuing with the slides, we are looking at the funding sources for the construction of this project. And you can see we have received connecting Washington funds. That's the biggest share there. The Transportation Improvement Board has awarded five million dollars to the project. And earlier this year, we received from Department of Transportation Motor Vehicle Account award for four point four million dollars, making this project fully funded for construction, considering just over five million dollars from city funding. Okay, now looking at the construction expenditures. We are seeing the construction management contract, which is what we're bringing to you for approval. Actually, today for discussion and for approval next week, it's one point eight five million dollars. Railroad costs are one point five million dollars. And of course, the construction estimate that we have at this time shows the construction added total cost of almost twenty five million dollars for a total construction cost of twenty eight point one five million dollars. Okay, city staff did a qualifications-based selection process for selecting the consulting firm that could be doing our construction management services for this project. We looked at, actually, we advertised the request for qualifications. We received qualifications from several firms. And then we evaluated their statement of qualifications and continued further with interviews. We selected WSP based on their qualifications, their broad experience with bridge construction management, their understanding of federal requirements, their broad experience coordinating with the railroad. And they had a great team, which we're going to look look at in a next slide. And we feel confident they are, they were the most qualified consultants for this work. The contract for this construction management services are expected to begin in July of this year and extend for two years. This is a preliminary schedule and of course, it would be adjusted based on when we're out to bid, depending on those spending items that we saw earlier. If you had an opportunity to look at the attached professional services agreement, you've seen it is divided into four tasks. Project management, resident engineer, office engineering and quality verification and inspection. So each of those are, make a whole of a full service for construction management. Project management includes all the billing, the coordinations, the meetings, assigning resources for the work that is forthcoming. Resident engineer takes care of all RFIs, change orders, coordination with the different utility providers, especially the ones that are not city-owned utilities, and assigning inspectors to to each of the tasks that are happening in the site. Office engineering takes care of the documentation of the different activities that are happening and the compliance with other requirements based on the funding, such as prevailing wage and having a file that is easily audible at the end of the of the end of the project. Finally, the quality verification or inspection refers to actually site observation of the tasks and verification that everything is being built within the specifications that were provided for this project. Now we're looking at the team where there's going to be city involvement as our project manager will be Kent McQ, our construction manager. And under his direction, there will be a full team provided by WSP and their sub consultants. I want to mention here, without going into much detail, that we are keeping our design engineer onboard to answer questions. That is J O V on on the side of the screen. And of course, the city has, will have a testing firm to perform all testing of materials. Finally, this is just an overview of how the cost for this project is divided. Where we're showing the vast majority is regular hours and there is some allotment for overtime hours in our contract along with some direct costs. And that's it.
Thank you very much. I I will have to pinch myself when I actually see this get started. It's been in the work for many years and I'm glad to see, and I appreciate the thorough work in selecting the contractor. And just looking forward to finally getting this piece all put together. In the midst of this pandemic, we didn't, wasn't sure how it was going to work out with the funding on the final funding for this project. But thank you very much and looking forward. Is there any comments from from council that you'd like to make before we go on to the next item in our agenda and put in on next week's agenda? Any comment from council?
This is Mr. Mayor. This is Mr. Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney.
Just briefly, Ms. Sarah, is, can you refresh my memory as to what we had budgeted in the capital improvement plan for this project? I know that this work with the railroad has been much more extensive than expected. And we've had a number of hiccups, including some some significant delays in the project. How are we comparing?
Yes. For the local funds, we have increased the amount of local funds to account for small increase in our cost estimate. But at this point, we we are expecting to see the bids before we actually make further changes in hopes that potentially we'll get lower bids and then that additional money will not be needed.
I understood that things can change in the future, but could you, I I just simply do not recall what the total project cost was in the CIP for this, and I was hoping to compare that twenty eight point one five five number in the report?
Yes, I will do my best to answer that. So on the local funds, as I remember, there was an increase of just about half a million dollars. But what you're probably seeing in the CIP includes the other phases of the project, which the overall cost of the project is around thirty five million dollars. I would have to go back and come back to you with this information to to verify what the number was last year on this.
I'd appreciate understanding that of an apples to apples total project cost now versus what it was. I'm interested in how this project is trending. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Maloney. I I actually find it interesting and don't quote me on these numbers, but I remember when we first started working on this project, we were estimating that twenty three million to build this bridge. And now it's up to twenty eight million over the years that we've had to try to get all the funding for this to happen. And it just, it it amazes me, just inflation and how things will go up and we have to account for this. So this is a learning, a a learning thing we got going on here is that, you know, sometimes we have to move quickly to make sure that the prices don't go up anymore. But nevertheless, we've done what we had to do to make it happen and looking forward to moving this forward. So thank you very much. All right. We'll put this on next week's agenda. Thank you for that, council. And moving right along, we're almost done to item number six, miscellaneous council discussion. I know Mr. Ret, Mr. Zabel, do you want to start it or?
If you don't mind, I do want to ask Mr. Ret, Kai, to talk a little bit about, as council recall, you you approved a reorganization of sorts in his department on the operations side just recently. And that's spooled up now. The other thing, we've had some delays that I think some of our citizens have noticed with as a result of maintenance having to do with essential work under the governor's order. So I want, Zach's going to talk a little bit about that and where we're at now and maybe what's changed from a month ago.
Sure. Thank you, Dave. Yeah. Once again, we appreciate the ratification of the ACS reorganization last week with the city council. Certainly help us from a parks, facilities and forestry perspective, provide a greater level of service year round to the community. When COVID began, the pandemic, we were beginning to ramp up our program for the spring based on direction from the state along with coordination with our regional partners. We've shifted our maintenance typically this beginning in March throughout April from that of maintaining, from our typical maintenance program to maintaining the bare minimum of assets. And essentially, the direction that we acted on was really to prevent, you know, the bare minimum, to prevent loss and spoilage of our assets, so grass, trees, vegetation, that sort of thing. We closed the park restrooms, certain auxiliary facilities like the First Staff Center, MLK Center. We closed off the playground equipment. The focus of staff really at that time and some of the uncertainty in the beginning of the pandemic was to focus directly on the facilities itself, mainly the ones like City Hall that was, essential staff was placed in, fire, police personnel, working with areas where emergency operations are happening. Also shifting staff focus to procurement of cleaning supplies and and provision of personal protective equipment. Even having a couple of facility staffers on standby to come into this room in the council chambers, various conference rooms to do a quick cleaning between meetings when we're fully enstaffed. Additionally, at that time, we looked to reassign seven of our members to the Public Works Operations Team. This was so that the Public Works Operations Team that was more specialized in utilities, equipments and the provision of utilities to the community could focus on that. And the facility staff and the park staff could help out with some of their more, I don't want to say they have menial tasks. Everyone's important, does great work, but some of the stuff that was a little less specialized from a public works perspective. As time passed and additional knowledge and needs shifted for the city, park staff returned to their normal duties and in recent weeks, we've been able to turn on the irrigation, charge up the irrigation to our parks and boulevards and begin mowing beyond the basic needs of spoilage prevention. As I stated earlier, as ratified last week, the ACS reorganization has brought on seven new full-time positions. Beginning last Monday, four of that full-time staff has been filled and seven seasonal employees have been brought on in order to take on the work. Orientation was Monday and then Tuesday, they began working in earnest to begin our normal and typical parks and boulevard maintenance plan. In particular, weed abatement, which is something as as director was a particular bugaboo as I'm driving around and seeing. So we've got the staff on hand beginning last week, fully ramp up our efforts to hit our parks and boulevards and bring them out in, bring about the image back to what we normally see on any given year over the next couple of weeks. So we're on that. We are receptive to complaints we receive over social media or through you, Mr. Mayor, various council members and directly to staff and addressing those as quickly as possible. And we've got the teams in place and we're out there working.
Well, thank you. And I know you've been very responsive. My question to you, Mr. Radkai, is, so are you, would you estimate three weeks, four weeks before you get into this, before you get caught up to be where you want to be in a normal routine?
We established our normal routine, but I think bringing the parks back to the the level of mowing and the level of manicuredness, if that's a word, that we're accustomed to see would probably take about two, three, four weeks. So let's average out about three.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other question from council? Mr. Zabel?
So I did have a couple more things. One, I, you know, based on the historical society interview we had just a little while ago, I wanted to assure council that Public Works staff has been working with Historical Society on the project. The project managers attended multiple Historical Society meetings and explained what the city can do to preserve different pieces. And we've had some pretty detailed discussions on on what those are. They're probably going to wind up at the time of demolition being stored at a city facility and probably utilized later.
Uh at a city facility and uh probably utilized later in some of the pocket parks, uh in and around the. Uh the new bridge or the railroad, just to kind of provide some historical perspective, so I wanted to. Assure council that's something that has been happening, and then I wanted to just speak real quickly to the CARES Act funding. Uh a couple of things that we talked about last uh week or so, CARES Act funding, we we did receive our letter from Commerce last week. So a couple of days sooner than we'd uh been told to receive, uh we were gonna receive it, we did uh. And we're gonna be working with them on on the contract uh over the next week or so, as well as some details on specifics regarding eligibility. And uh required documentation that we're gonna need from uh recipients, as well as uh more detail on allowable activities. Uh so we'll be coming to council, I think on June eighth, with that information, along with. Uh a detailed um financial report that will not only give you your your quarterly report, but also give you some projections on. What our what our current situation is, the impact of COVID as we know it. Um obviously, it'd be. Preferred to to provide it later in the months because those uh revenues lag a couple of months, so we're. By early June, we'll we'll really just kind of have a sense of what March, what the March hit was. You really won't know what April looked like, but. Uh on the other hand, we have the timing of being able to get funds out to the community as well, so we're trying to make that balance to give you good information. Uh but also allow you to have some timely disbursements of of the funds you wanted, council would want to disperse, so. We'll also have uh some more detail on what the city's own uh COVID uh impacts have been and have those costs detailed up for you. Uh and other other resources as well, so with that, I didn't have anything further.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody else for miscellaneous discussion?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Roach. Um I have something uh unrelated to. Uh anything we've discussed tonight, and it might be a. Something I don't know if council has ever had to deal with, but I'm gonna bring it up because it um. Is something that I'm concerned about for my own personal well-being, but also wanting input from. City attorney and uh Mister Zabel, as well as you, mayor. Um. And that is, you know, I have not brought this up in the past, but I'm. I'm at a point where I need to talk about this so that I do what's right for myself, um and that is that. You know, my identity, being a woman of color, being a Muslim, um being an American Pakistani. Is all things that I share about who I am. Um what I don't find okay whatsoever is for other city council members. And other city council members' wives posting about me on social media. In a way that is derogatory, it is dog whistling, uh. People who want to do me harm. And. I feel. Like it is the right thing for me to do to, one, stick up for myself, two, to say, I'm not okay with it. And Mister Millen, you need to rein in your wife because I don't appreciate it. And it goes to anyone else out there who thinks that that is all right, it is not all right, and I will call you out and put you on blast for it.
Hey, I don't think this is Zarwush, I don't think this is the place. You can't talk to me in private. Again, I'm. Concentrated on the council, so that should be our number one concern, what's going on with the city, so that's. Again, I'll have to look.
Well, it becomes a, it becomes an issue when it has to do with comments that are made about. My decisions and my actions as a city council member. It's not on my personal page, it's on city page and live stream with the city of Pasco meetings, and so. That's something that you need to address, but I want to put that out there that I'm not okay with that because this is not the first time, and I'm sure it's not gonna be the last time. But I'm not gonna sit here quietly and take that from anybody.
Hey, I'm concentrating on the media and I wasn't concentrating on social media. I'm counseling on this, so. Being a good council member and seeing what's going on in the city is my number one priority and not seeing what's on Facebook.
Okay, so um. Th- thank you, Mrs. Councilmember Roach uh and Mister Maloney. Um I think I've never been in this situation before, but maybe we can discuss this further. Uh but uh understand and 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 hear your concerns and uh probably should be addressed. So. I guess from here, is there anybody else that has any other comments? Well, thank you for uh joining us tonight. Um have a good week and we'll see you next week. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.